Good evening Mahopac community. It's October 20th, 2020, a couple of weeks into our hybrid learning and several weeks into now with our virtual and our remote learning. So I would like to welcome everybody to tonight's work session. And would you please at this time, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you, everyone. All right, so we have a wonderful, wonderful work session planned today with some Capitol project updates. We have a word coming up from our superintendent. So what I'd like to do now is I'd like to make a motion to open this meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Ray. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, Ben, all in favor, I saw Larry too, all in favor. Hi, thank you very much. I would like to turn it over right now to our superintendent of schools, Mr. Anthony DiCarlo. Anthony.
Thank you, President Mangan, thank you very much. We're going to start tonight's work session with an update from Tetra Tech. As you know, we finished, and the Palumbo Group, Chris and Lou are here tonight. As you know, we're in the process of finishing up our early phase, which was our roofwork. Chris and Lou will give a brief description about how that went, where we were at with the project itself. And then we're going to go into looking at some renditions of our Phase One work that'll be taking place next summer and into the fall. The bodice of that work will be done at the high school, both inside and outside, with also some additional work being done at the middle school, in the entranceway and the driveways, as well as our two turf fields at the high school and middle school. So I will turn it over to Chris Klavitz from Tetra Tech, who will lead us in the discussion along with Lou Rodriguez. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Anthony. Melody, if you would allow me to share my screen, I would like to present, or you could project the file that I sent earlier.
You're all set, Chris.
Okay, hopefully you can see the image, the title page of this presentation with today's date on it. Folks see that?
Yes.
Great, thanks. So yeah, thanks for having me this evening. We're excited to give you an update. It's been a few months since we really dove into Capitol projects. I know you've been looking at a couple of other things, getting school going and some other pressing matters. So it's good to give an update here. So I'm going to start with a slide that, for those of you who have been involved in this process, will probably see as a familiar slide, which is an overview of the Capitol project, you know, leading up to the vote, showing the early package, and we'll touch on that in a moment. That is just wrapping up construction now. We are in October of 2020. Phase One is at SED. It's being reviewed by the state, and so we anticipate receiving their review and hopefully approval very soon on that, with an anticipation that we'll go out to bid after the first of the year. We'll talk a little bit about the bidding structure and the construction phase there. At the same time, we are starting Phase Two. So we're entering the design phase of that, which is the final chunk of work. And we'll go over just very briefly what the scope of that is. This is a high-level slide, just to remind folks of the values, you know, that were voted by the public and how that breaks down very roughly. The early package, of course, being the roofing project that is finishing construction. As we advertise the project to the community, we talked about Phase One, we talked about Phase Two. As we were getting into the planning in more detail after the successful vote, we realized that there was a piece of work that we could try to get done earlier, because it was roofing work and it was relatively streamlined. So we were able to do that, and that's wrapping up pretty successfully. The early package, as I said, is this roofing work that occurred at the high school, the middle school, former road, elementary, and Maupac Falls building. Those of you who've been around, involved in these Capitol projects for a few years, may remember that the Maupac Falls building roofing work was bid previously under the previous roofing Capitol project that was done a couple of years ago. That was bid as a bid alternate, you know, to protect the bidding. And at that time, it wasn't able to be included in the project scope. So we, you know, moved that forward into this phase and we're successful in getting good bid numbers. Other big parts of that early package, well, really, one other big part of that was the stadium field lighting that you'll see in place if you drive out there today. I'll turn it over to Lou to just give a brief overview of, you know, just finishing up the construction and just kind of where we stand with that at this point.
Thanks, Chris. So yeah, just to revisit, we awarded roofing contracts and the stadium contract, the lighting. It was back in April that we, right after this COVID thing hit, we really, we went out on the street and we were able to still get some really good numbers on the roofing. Our original budget for this early phase of work included some escalation costs, like Chris said, because we were looking at bidding this potentially in the spring of 2021. We ended up bidding it a year earlier. We had about $8.3 million allocated to this first phase of work. Currently, we are sitting at 6.2. 6.22 is our number right now. We're doing punchless, so we're about $2 million under budget on this first phase of work, which is fantastic. So that's just going to really put us in a better position for the next phase of work. Right now, we are, you know, punching out. All of the major changes that we were going to run into have been dealt with. We are under budget, and I'm happy to say, even with working through this pandemic, all the contractors did a good job, and we're going to bring this into closure and looking forward to bidding this next phase. I think the one good thing that's happened is a lot of projects, commercial projects have been shelved that, you know, private, on the private side, people are just holding back a little bit to try to understand what's happening before they go into a major investment or they've shelved their projects for a year, just to really understand what's happening with the election and whatnot. So coming into early 2021, if we get SED approval in December, like we're hoping, and we hit the streets with a bid in January, that's really going to position ourselves really well for the bidding of the next phase of work at the high school, which has a mix of a lot of different things. We do have the field turf component. We have site work associated with the new circulation and parking at the middle school. And then following that is the water facility. So really happy to, you know, be where we're at right now. And if you guys have any questions prior to Chris going to the next phase, I'm open for it.
Hi, this is Lucy, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So one of the things that we spoke about early on was the lockers at the high school that were not included in the overall numbers. And we said, let's see how things work out, if there's extra money somewhere. So I just want to bring it to the full board's attention that if there is extra money, that's where we need to put it. So I just wanted to bring that back to the board too, as a reminder, and also reminded to the plan and for the next planning phases.
So as we, that's good. As we finish up construction on these phases and get more certainty about where we stand with the budget, you know, it's not uncommon that districts, especially if there's a good bidding climate, will end, you know, the planned work and have some money left over. That's a delta between the amount that was actually spent and the amount that was approved by the voters. And so packaging another small project is something that, you know, that often happens. And so that's good to, you know, keep in mind those things that have come up over the process and hold on to those ideas as we move forward and can do more hopefully with the budget. We'll touch a little bit on some of the locker rooms, Lucy. So I'm glad you brought that up, because there was a change adding some showers, and we'll talk about that in Phase One.
Okay, thank you.
Lucy, are you talking about the lockers in the school or the actual locker room?
It started with the locker rooms that were not included.
The locker room, right, that's exactly right.
Yeah. So again, I have no idea how much that would be, but my hearing is just being open, $2 million. That's something where originally we thought would be included. I don't know how it fell through the cracks, but I think that's such an important thing, especially when we get back to normal. And when other schools come to our school, our lockers really don't, our locker rooms are not up to par at all.
So Lucy, Chris will meant talk about, you know, what's happening in Phase One. But typically, we don't like to spend a surplus until we get through everything that we said would be in the project. So we'll keep that, you know, with our, you know, on the back burner right now. Though $2 million is great, we don't know what the next two phases are going to bring us with the work and the demand and manufacturing and different things that have affected us in this phase, though it didn't hurt us, but I just want us to be cautious.
I understand that. I'm just saying to kind of, you know, we can keep that aside. I don't know how much it would cost. I just wanted to bring that as a reminder, that's all.
The top of our back burner list.
Yeah, so those of you who are involved in the Capitol project planning know that, you know, we had this big long spreadsheet that we went through. Dave and others were involved in sort of prioritizing that. So if you remember, you know, going through line item by line, and there's lots of other stuff that we've talked about that we can reach back to, update that spreadsheet and move forward. So it's a good planning document that way. So yeah, you know, for Phase Two, we plan to bid that in the beginning of 2022. So you don't know what's going to happen with the economy between now and then. There's a lot of uncertainty. So as Sandra said, you know, I think it's wise to get your bids in, get some numbers, and then, you know, see where you end up, and you can move forward. So going back, getting into Phase One, unless anyone has questions about the early package, I mean, I could show you pictures of roofs.
Chris, you're frozen.
You're frozen.
Oh, I thought it was me.
So did I.
I'm going to keep going, sorry. Everybody froze for a minute there, so I thought maybe it was me. Okay, so Phase One, as I said, we have completed the design process. We've submitted to the state, we're awaiting their approval. Most of this work is at the high school. All right, so I'll be showing you some images of a couple of the bigger portions of the project. So science labs upgraded, you know, you can see this picture of the existing science labs. You know, they've served their time, and there are a number of rooms that are to be upgraded. The music rooms, Stash is on, we've had some good meetings with him to upgrade that music suite and try to get some better acoustics and more efficient layout of those areas. The steam lab, we've been meeting with Tom at the high school there. We'll look at the library media center, which is a reimagining of what that could be. I'll show you an image of the synthetic turf. The locker room upgrades that we talked about that are included in Phase One is the varsity locker room. That's all the way at the corner there, that's nearest the field, that you come in directly from the outside. That varsity locker room will be upgraded. It's the boys' varsity locker room. And there will be some upgrades to the shower facilities as well in that, on the boys' side there, based on some of the conversations we had during the design process. The secure vestibules included, so that wonderful rotunda-like space that you have at the front of your building is going to have some upgrades, and we'll see a couple of images on that. The cafeteria serving area down by the cafeteria. This is the serving kitchen, right? So not the workhorse kitchen that's sort of across the hallway, but where they bring the food and where they serve the food. We're going to be doing some upgrades there to try to help the flow of students through those areas, hopefully improve some of the wait times and the lines that sort of snake out, out into the hallway. In addition, there are some improvements to, you know, egress situations here and there, fire alarm, PA system. There's some HVAC improvements. That's something that even before COVID happened was known by the district as part of the facility evaluation that we reviewed with you. So I'll just do a slight aside, and most of you are aware that the state of New York requires school districts every five years to perform a building condition survey. So where you walk through the buildings and, you know, sort of quantify things that need to be improved about your buildings. So we did that with the district a few years ago now, and that formed the basis for this Capitol project in part. Very often, Capitol projects include a lot of this sort of nuts and bolts stuff, HVAC systems, new clocks, you know, just systems that have aged out and need to be replaced, that are more technical in nature. And we combine that with some of the things at the top of this list, like, you know, really, really taking another look at some of your educational spaces and bringing them, bringing them up to a new standard. Couple of the other pieces that were big in Phase One, the middle school entrance traffic. We'll look at a plan on that. So that's the front area of the parking in front, you know, where the buses drop off and reconfiguring that, as well as some upgrade to that side parking lot where parents tend to drop off. Part of the middle school renovations there is the synthetic turf practice field that will happen out in the back there. The main campus water system is another significant part of Phase One. So many of you are aware of the water quality, you know, sort of more aesthetic water quality issues, especially at the middle school. You've had some over the years, some reverse osmosis, you know, system at the high school for, you know, some of the kitchen water and some other things. So we looked at some of the wells, you have a number of wells on the site, and we looked at the output and the water quality of those to figure out, you know, that essentially we're going to rehabilitate one of your existing wells and add some piping that will connect that well to the high school, the middle school, and the Falls building to provide better water quality for those buildings. That necessitated the addition of a pump house, basically to manage that water and be able to pump that around the site. So we'll take a look at where that is. And the bus garage, there were some HVAC considerations, mostly around heating for the comfort of your maintenance staff in there. And that sort of rounds out Phase One. So if there are other questions about Phase One, do we want to talk about that now before we get into images? Or shall I just keep going?
Chris, real quick, it's Mike. The electrical panels, I wasn't sure, are you looking, are we going to be looking to increase our power? Are we going to be looking to bring more in? Or do you think we need to bring more in? Or are we just going to upgrade the old existing federal panels that should have been replaced 35 years ago?
Yeah, we're not changing the service to the building. So it seems that the service coming in is adequate. I know that, you know, we've heard from staff that, you know, certain circuits, you know, sort of get tripped more easily. So we hope to be able to spread those out a little bit more, but it's primarily just going in and seeing, you know, these are old electrical panels. We need to update these, just, you know, for safety primarily.
Understood, thank you.
So here is an image of the main campus there with the high school, middle school, Falls building at the top. Just, you know, sort of showing the areas of the synthetic turf, you know, between the high school and middle school. There's a practice field, and you can see that, you know, even in the aerial photo, the usage patterns of the football practice on there. The existing turf field will remain, it will stay online, as well as the track. It's got that new lighting. But this will be adding a multi-use field. So we've talked with athletic director about, you know, how to stripe that and had, you know, Mike's been involved in some of those conversations about what sports and, you know, which lines are on top and all those pieces. So one of the thoughts about placement of that field, again, is that, you know, there are those existing lights that the MSA put up some years ago, and those will remain in place and be able to be used, you know, just as they have been. You see future parking here, you know. So as we were positioning this field, you know, relative to the sun and also within the area that we had thought, you know, down the road, you know, there's an area left over that could, you know, potentially become a parking lot. One of the things that we look at from a budgeting standpoint is that site work on these buildings very quickly fills up your sort of adable portion, the portion of the budget that you get from building aid. So we do take a close look at that, because very quickly the site work will push through that aid ceiling. So it's good to spread that out, because that refreshes every five years. So that's a sort of a future planning item that, once your incidental aid is refreshed, that, you know, doing some more site work there will allow that to be aided. The middle school entrance over here, you know, this is generally the area where we're going to be, you know, replacing asphalt that's aging out, reconfiguring the drop-off area. And we'll look at that in a little more detail. And then the practice field over here behind the middle school. That's going to be a smaller size of field, right? So just know that it's not a full regulation field. It's a practice field, but certainly will give you some added functionality, especially for modified type practice and even contests if you want. The pump house?
Okay, for one second, I believe one of the other, I think one of the other issues, one of the other items that we had discussed when discussing Phase One, if there was available monies at the end to keep on the list was replacing those lights on the, the MSA lights, as you referred to MS. That's still, is that still on the future list on a lower priority than the locker room?
I can double check that. And if it's not, we can, you know, make a note of it and come back to it when we're ready to have that tough conversation about what's in and what's out.
Great, thanks.
Adam, we definitely had that conversation in prior meetings, so I do have it on the list.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Hannah.
So there's an area over back behind the middle school that has some, it's sort of that, near that island that you drive around as you're dropping off in that backdrop off area at the middle school, where that pump house and the water tank will be a water storage tank as part of the infrastructure. So the well that we'll be utilizing is over by the D-zone of the track. It has relatively good output, but that's sort of like, it's sort of like a trickle feeder, you know. So we'll be drawing the water out of that well at a relatively slow and steady rate and using that to fill the water tank. So, you know, that during a day, maybe you have a big event, you're drawing down that water, but that water tank is what gives you that flexibility. And that will be pumped from that location out to each building. So there will be a very small amount of work in this phase in the middle school just to accommodate that, you know, the water entering into the building and some backup pumps, both in the middle school and in the Falls building. So a little more detail about the site work. Then these are, I just kind of clipped them and stuck them together from our construction documents, tried to scale them appropriately, just so you can get a sense of the level of detail. You know, we're looking at the walkways and all the striping plans and so forth. You see the drive for this pump house and water tank here. Tainting walls over there, and we have the middle school entry reconfiguration, right? So we talked a lot about the flow of traffic, allowing buses and, you know, potentially on the non-peak times, parents to be able to drop off here and let children out safely so that the through circulation, you know, those of you who've seen the drop off and pickup know that there's, you know, there are a lot of things happening with traffic on this campus. Sometimes, you know, traffic being allowed to come through, sometimes it's broken off, or sometimes it's closed off. But this allows a safe drop off, allows people to turn around, go back out. It allows queuing for parent drop off back in this back parking lot, as well as visitor parking out in front. The guard shack up the front will slide a little bit, but stay generally in the same area. And here we see the practice field behind there. There was also some lighting improvements that'll be made, some building mounted lighting, especially back near this entrance to the gymnasium. I know there are basketball games that happen back there, and we heard that during the winter, when basketball's played, it gets kind of dark. And so adding some lighting back there to, just for safety.
So Chris, it's Anthony. I just want to just remind everybody, you know, we also, we keep on talking about practice field and we keep talking and referring to sports. These two fields open up our physical education department, the things that we can now do. We have a turf field for the middle school, as well as an additional high school, and it gives us so much more flexibility to be able to do things for our physical education department and for our students. I just want to mention that, because sometimes we get so hooked into the sports aspect of it, we forget about the academic piece of it, and it's a big, big win for our physical education department and our kids.
Absolutely.
A good point.
Okay, this is a diagram of, you know, some of the piping. This was early on, we were considering a different location, but just to show that there's piping going to all these buildings. So I'd like to run through a few images of some of the significant spaces that we're going to, that are going to see some renovation in Phase One. So this is an image of the library media center. For those of you that are familiar with it, on the right here is the current entrance into the library with the circulation desk there. We're looking into that courtyard, okay? So opening up the main part of the space, we met a lot with Dara Berkowitz, your librarian at the high school, for a series of meetings to get this space to feel like the type of work that students will be doing in here will be accommodated well. Looking back in the other direction, so we're moving the circulation desk down to the one end so that the students will enter off of that one of those main hallways instead of coming in from the cross hallway. And we see the courtyard to the right here. Over on the right side of the image is currently a classroom space. So we're going to be opening that up to be part of the library space, and that's where a lot of the books will be housed. We'll see an image of that in a moment. Over in this side, we see some of the smaller group team study areas open to the library. Some are closed, which we'll see in a moment, but outfitting those with screens so that students can do group project work at various sizes. So like three to four students, and then there are a couple larger rooms that can accommodate, you know, six or eight students working together on a project. Here's a, a sort of closer up version of the view of the, of the, the booth, sorry, the, uh, the circulation desk. Uh, we're trying to, you know, get those volumes in. We worked a lot with Dara to, try to get the counts of volumes in on the shelving. She's going through and calling some stuff, so we, we were able to get a lot of new functions in, try to keep as many of that, of the physical, uh, books as we can. I'll mention this glass up here. Uh, so this is currently a space that's open to the library. You go up a few steps and that, that's where a lot of the books are right now. Uh, we're renovating this space to include, uh, maker space in here that has power data, sort of work table. That can work in conjunction with the STEM suite and the new project lead the way curriculum that's being developed. Uh, to allow students to be able to do some project work at times when those, those main spaces are not available. This is another workspace that, that students can do group projects in. And we have computers, uh, computer terminals uh, over here and as well along, along the corridor wall. I should say that, I'm surprised nobody's commenting on colors yet, um, because that's often something that gets a, a strong response. We are not selecting the colors at this point. The way that works, uh, we're, we're providing some suggestion just to help visualize the space. Once we get the bids in and we know what manufacturers and what products the, the contractors are, are basing their bids on, then we'll look at those, uh, the different colorways. So once we know who the carpet manufacturer is, we'll look at those colors and, and we'll have meetings. So that happens, uh, a little bit later. And here, I think this is the last image of the library perhaps of the, you know, stack space up here and some of these, uh, student working areas. Here's another one of the stacks. And the, here's a little view into the, uh, the maker space. And this is, so there's, um, there's Chromebook, uh, maintenance, uh, section there. There's a lot of, a lot of back and forth of Chromebooks and getting those updated. We see some of the, um, more enclosed meeting spaces for students to meet here. And behind these doors are fully enclosed meeting spaces. Uh, so there's a variety of areas there, um, popping, you know, there would be an adult down at this end of the library. It is, it is a pretty long space. Um, just for, you know, uh, supervision. Moving on to the STEM suite. So this is in one of those pods. If you come in the front door, it's that, that sort of pod of the building that is immediately to your right as you approach the, the main entrance. So this will be, you know, have a significant renovation, um, in, in going, working with Tom. Um, and, and Jennifer arrived at an arrangement that would be flexible and give them a lot of opportunity to be able to, teach a lot of different curriculum in, in a suite. So you'll see these two large openings. Basically, we created three spaces. There are two classroom spaces, and then there's one space that's a, a little more shop-like. It's not, you know, a full wood shop or anything like that, but you can see, you know, power reels from the ceiling. A lot of movable furniture. Basically, everything in this area will be movable, um, including a lot of this casework around the edge. Based on the way that they anticipate teaching, uh, project lead the way, the way that they're teaching, you know, right now, some of their lessons, they'll have, uh, materials in a cabinet. And if they need to teach that lesson, uh, in this classroom space, they wheel it right in there. If they want to teach that lesson out in the more shop-like space, they wheel it out there. And it really gives them a lot of flexibility to use these different classrooms. Um, in a lot of different ways. So these are some, some rolling, uh, shutters that can be closed if they want to, um, you know, teach a lesson in the space while having, uh, a different lesson in the, in the main space in the back there. So really the focus was on making this space flexible and be able to handle, uh, teaching in a lot of different ways. Classrooms. Also, you can see across, there's a hallway that comes in, openness so that you can, feel like you're in a suite, you're in an area where a lot of different STEM-type teaching areas, um, are happening, but you can also close those off, lots of openings to, to reduce the distractions as well. We do, are, are renovating a lot of the science rooms, uh, mostly on the second floor. This is 235, I think. There are a lot of chemistry rooms that, uh, will be upgraded. This is one of them. So we see the, the fume hood, the, the, you know, shower coming in. Uh, we talked a lot again about flexibility of space. These tables can be moved out. They can be, they can be arranged in the middle for a traditional kind of lecture sort of orientation or moved to the edges to form peninsulas. And the casework around the edge is fixed. That's where your, your plumbing, your gas, you know, all those pieces, uh, electricity exists within that. Teaching space, um, front with, uh, mic board space. Moving to the band room. Okay, so this, uh, this part of the building, uh, so we're looking at to the courtyard on the more recent addition at the windows here. Or you have a lot of science rooms across the way. This space is currently, um, a, a number of spaces. There's coral room, the band room. And if you've been in that suite there, you know, there's a music storage and some offices in the, in the middle of that space. So we're clearing that all out, creating two larger teaching spaces, uh, a coral room with a flat floor for flexibility. Uh, we, we talked to, to Stash about this on, on a variety of meetings. In this band room, one of the things that we're, we're, we're trying to get is more volume in this room. One, that you have a great program, you have a lot of involvement, um, and, and this program is bursting at the seams. So, um, just getting more, uh, you know, space for seating in that area. One of the ways we're doing that is to move some of the instrument storage out into the hallway. Uh, so there's a cross hallway that goes across the building, uh, that somebody, I don't know, maybe it was, I think it was Stash's idea, said, you know, can we use this hallway? We said, hmm, you know, never thought about that. So we went back, we did some code research, uh, determined that it wasn't actually required for code ERES. Um, and we said, yeah, that, there's some square footage there that you can use. So we're moving some of the instrument storage into those areas so that students can come in. They can be able to get their instruments. They can go into the space and it, it clears it out. Obviously, there, there is some instrument storage in here, but we're really trying to get a lot of it out into that corridor space. So we're looking at the acoustics of the ceiling. Luxury vinyl pile, which is basically a plank vinyl pile. It's relatively low maintenance, um, but has a plank look. To, to go in there for the, uh, for the, for the music room. Some of this will be excavated out. Um, to, to create more volume acoustically. Finally, we have the front entrance. So this is the rotunda that some of you, um, are aware of. Into the school. So we'll be adding a secure vestibule into that. So adding a pair of doors and a wall that does not go all the way up because, uh, in, you know, sunlight and skylight to, to still come in, uh, providing a safe, reading area for, for your receptionist, uh, who currently is sitting in this area, but is open to, uh, to the vestibule. So looking at some sightlines, just being sure that, um, visitors can come in and be greeted. Uh, and the person that's sitting in there can see out to the front, see into the space where there's a lot of student traffic. Through the door, thank you as well. Uh, so that's, that's a quick, you know, sort of overview of, of phase one. To get into phase two, as, uh, we just had a kickoff meeting with building principals and, and a number of you were on the call as well. Uh, at the middle school, we'll be, um, doing library media center upgrades, uh, steam lab in one of your existing classrooms. That planetarium, that round volume there, updating that to be a large group instruction space. Uh, updating the cafeteria serving area just to, you know, be able to use that space more efficiently. And again, uh, egress fire alarm, PA system, some HVAC improvements, notably the chiller. There's that existing chiller that will be, um, replacing and getting that online. That's one of the few, um, addition, additional air conditioning, uh, that'll be added as part of the capital project. Uh, and some clocks and electrical panels again. Uh, we're, and we're just entering the design phase on this. At the elementary schools, uh, a lot of, a lot of similar work across, across elementary schools, the addition of secure vestibules, uh, basically across the board. Uh, library media center upgrades in the, in the primary, you know, education buildings. Uh, some playground improvements, you know, fire alarm, PA clocks, that, that kind of stuff. At Lakeview, there will also be improvements to the nurses' office, that student services area that's, that's, um, has some offices and some other spaces in there and just, just redesigning that to be able to make that space more efficient and, and work better. And the other air conditioning piece, um, is adding air conditioning to the, to the cafeteria at Lakeview. Any questions on that? I know it's a pretty quick, um, overview, but just an update mostly on, on what we're about to design.
And just, and just for the, just for the sake, because I know this is important to Fulmer, and finally getting an elevator at Fulmer, so we can access the, the bottom and the top floors.
That's right. That's a good accessibility, uh, feature. And, and one that we anticipated that SED, you know, when we do a project, um, SED tends to look for things like that, that your whole building is accessible, so.
Hey, Chris, it's Adam again. Um, one of the other topics, I know, I know some of the work has been done at Lakeview with the, um, ventilation system in a gymnasium. That's another, another one that's, uh, for the possibility of, um, extra work if, uh, available, uh, on the list, correct?
That is right. Yes, we have talked about that.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Chris, this is Ray. I apologize if you mentioned this or showed it. There is an ADA lift in the library next to the stairs, correct?
At the high school?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay, that was, that was, all right, thank you.
Okay. Just one quick, just in terms of the timing. So phase one is at SED for approval. When would you, when, when's the expectation of that occurring in the next couple of months? Or is that, you know, best case scenario, worst case scenario?
Uh, so we anticipate getting, so there's architectural review and there's sort of MEP review. There, there are different sub, subsets within that office and they have different review times. Uh, we anticipate getting architectural review back within the next couple of weeks. So it should be in, um, in November sometime. The mechanical review is a couple of weeks longer. Um, so we might see that, we might see that in November, but, uh, beginning of December might be a more reasonable time to get their, um, yeah, their initial review. And then, you know, we need to respond to those and, you know, satisfy their comments to their.
Thank you.
Any other questions, guys, for Chris or for Lou? Lou, I just wanted to thank, I know Lou's on. Lou, I wanted to thank you for the, uh, for the effort this summer with the, uh, with the roof project. I, uh, I know it was tough with all the, with all the, um, with all the COVID-related and the pandemic-related issues with, uh, with staffing and the ability to, you know, how many people you could have, a company could have in and how we, and how many could actually be, you know, at the, at the, at the job site. And I thought you, I thought you did a great job handling it and, uh, and, and keeping the, uh, keeping everybody focused and, uh, and getting the job done. So Lou, thank you. And, uh, and that's why you have a construction management group, folks.
Thank you.
Chris, Chris, I wanted to thank you as well. Uh, you know, we touched on, if you think about what we've done right now, we've got secure vestibules. We're looking at, you know, we're looking at renovating library spaces. We're looking at, you know, uh, tremendous, uh, improvements to the music, to athletics and to our science, uh, programs. And, uh, and I think I, what I'd like to do is I'd like to thank this board right now for all the hard work that they've done. And the previous board and board members that also served. This, uh, this facility audit was done, Chris, was it back, was it back in 2015? Was a facility audit? I, I believe it was 2015 that the, uh, the facility audit was done. So the legwork started back then to identify these, uh, uh, these concerns, these areas of improvement. And, uh, and it's finally nice that we're getting here and we're, and we're, uh, we're right at the dance. We're at fruition. So Chris, thank you and, and, uh, and Tetra Tech and Garrett and, and, and the rest of the staff there for the, uh, for the fine work and, and, and moving things along and, you know, and, and getting us to the dance, so to speak. So thank you, Chris.
So Mike, what you, Mike, what's really important, this is Anthony, is that, you know, we have to understand that all this work at the high school cannot be done over the course of the summer. So there's going to be a lot of preparation and discussion because it's going to go into the fall. And that's, you know, that's, it's important. It's not going to be when you're doing renovations, whether it's your house or it's a school. There are going to be some inconveniences and we're going to work through them. We're going to make sure that we do it in a way that is, is safe and that the work is done. A lot of it probably once school starts, you know, some cases during the school day, but a lot of time after school hours. But that's what comes with trying to do some of the work, um, that you're looking to do. I, I just want to echo what Mike said to the previous board and to this board. This happened relatively quickly. Um, Adam and, uh, and, uh, and, and, uh, Ben, as well as Ev Ray, and I think you, you knew that. Uh, you know, this is just literally the first three months I was here. We had a gentleman come in and spoke to us about the fact that, you know, you have a lot of debt coming off. Now's the time to do something. And the previous board and this board, along with my cabinet and the leadership team, really got together, um, with Tetra Tech and, you know, looking at getting a, a, a construction manager group in which we did our due diligence. And, and here's where we are now. And I'm very happy with the initial phase and what happened. Uh, we are trying our hardest to those new board members and current board members, um, to do this the right way. Uh, we know what happened many, many years ago. Um, I think we have a, a great collective group of people on this. From architects to a construction manager, to, to, to Sandra and her team. And we're blessed to have board members who know this. And we're going to continue to do it the right way and, and do the kind of work that was, uh, you know, was put on the back burner for many, many years. And I think it's so important for our kids, for our community, um, to bring the district to where it used to be. One of the pinnacles when it comes to facilities and, and programs for kids. So I just want to thank this board and the last board for having the confidence and allowing us to go out, to put this referendum out. And I think the public overwhelmingly said, yeah, it's something that we need to do for our kids. It's an investment in their future and it's also an investment in our schools. So I just want to echo what you had said, Mike, and thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Well said, Mr. Superintendent. Well said. Okay, um, all right. So that brings us to, uh, if, if there are any more questions, uh, that's going to bring us to a, um, a, 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 a quick review of the, uh, of the agenda for, um, for this Thursday. So, um, I will, uh, everybody's had a chance to review, uh, the, uh, the agenda. Uh, board members were able to review it. Um, I know it, uh, I know it was a pretty big, uh, pretty big, uh, printout. Um, so if you want, I, I'll just, uh, you want me to read through it? I will read through it at this point. So, um, so we'll start off with our, uh, with our regular, you know, the regular opening of the meeting. Uh, we'll have presentations. We have presentations on, uh, for, um, uh, for the national merit semifinals. Um, that would be, uh, that's, uh, Max Semig, Semigran. Uh, we've got, uh, a national, uh, merit semifinalist, Alexa Tyberg. We have national commended scholar Angelo, uh, Deto, Detoco. And then we'll, um, and then we've got, uh, uh, we'll be, uh, we'll be getting this update that we just got from Tetra Tech. So Tetra Tech and the Palumba Group will be, uh, back with us again. Uh, we'll slide down to communications. Uh, we'll have comments on, on, uh, agenda items. Finance, we'll have our treasurer's report. Um, we'll have, um, we'll have our approval of, uh, of the minutes of the work session from September 22nd. Uh, we'll have, um, we'll have, um, minutes of approval for our regular meeting for September 24th, 2020. Uh, we'll have the superintendent report. We'll have our stand.
Mike. Your, your sound went off.
We'll have the, um, Regina Burke Jones Amendment Agreement or Special Education Report, our communication specialist, uh, discussion. Um, we'll also have, uh, um, we've got, um, attachments for, um, to, uh, to review for the Benatio Group. Um, our, our auditors, we have the, uh, we also have Tobin and Company. Uh, just wanted to make a quick shout out. Barbara Russell, Barbara, uh, has been our, uh, has worked with us, uh, as our internal auditor. Uh, she's been here for a number of years. A wonderful woman. Wonderful woman. Just wanted to say, Barbara, thank you so much. And I'll say this again, I'll echo it again on Thursday. But Barbara, thank you for for so so many years of faithful service to our district. We are indebted to you and we wish you very, very well in your in your retirement. So thank you for that. And then we have a, we have policy 1512, which is a public participation at board meetings policy that will that will be voting on and we'll also have and then we'll go right to our closing of the meeting. So so that's what that's where that's the review of our of our agenda for 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 Thursday night. And
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
Sure. Well, first of all, I I do think agenda item H, the policy 1512 policy should be taken off of the consent agenda and put in its own separate item. I know that I can point a word to that on Thursday night, but I think from the get go, that should be moved. Also, I see that we don't have the regular resident comments at the end of the meeting. It's almost like we're assuming policy H is going to pass, which I think is not fair. So I think resident comments for non-agenda items should be at the end of the meeting because policy 1512, the amendment on there hasn't been voted on, hasn't been passed yet. So I don't know if we want to debate that item yet, but I do think it should be removed from the consent agenda.
Well, Tanner, if you remember at the last meeting on advice of council, I, you know, we we I made an announcement that we would be we'll be moving to consent agenda items only for 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 this month. So with that, that I already made that. That was last month's, last month's, last month's meeting. So.
Can you clarify that for me? What does that mean?
We're that with this month, we were, because we were virtual, we're just doing, we're doing consent agenda items only. We're commenting on consent agenda items only.
Okay, but what about the amendment to policy 1512 being moved off the consent agenda into its own separate item?
Oh, you can, we can can make that motion on Thursday.
Okay, I can make that a motion on Thursday. Okay. The way 1512 is written right now, there should be resident comments at the end of the agenda. And if there isn't, can you explain to me what the legal counsel said that's removing it? Like, why? I understand the decision, but why?
Well, we have our legal counsel. So what we're going to be doing, and this is probably an excellent time to do this. So what we'll do is we will move into, because our counsel, we do have counsel waiting for us in executive session. So we will get a clarification from this. So what I'd like to do, if that's the case, what I'd like to do right now is I'd like to get a motion so we can move into executive session. So we can discuss the topics that we have outlined personnel wise, and we can also talk to our to our attorney. We also have some other items with with educational components for our from our attorney. So what I'd like to do right now is get a motion so we can go into executive session.
Some of.
Thank you, Lucy. Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. And to the public, thank you so much. I hope you enjoyed this evening. We we won't be voting in anything in our executive session. So so we'll come right out of right out of executive session and 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 in public. So you won't see us, we won't be coming back, but we look forward to seeing you on Thursday. And as always, please, please tune in to our superintendent spotlight and also visit the website for the latest of the updated information and also the information that we have on the on the on the state dashboard with regards to COVID. So please, everybody, please stay safe. Let's stay positive. And, you know, we're all in this together and we're we're going to get through this. We're going to make it. So with that, I'd like to say thank you again and stay safe to the public.